All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order with the invocation impled by the Honorable Dr. Harriet Rucker.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we ask you for your guidance as we conduct the business of Newberry County Council. Help us to make good decisions, decisions that will be in the best interests of our citizens. We ask you to be with our nation. We ask you to bring love and kindness back to our nation. We ask you to be with those who are ill with COVID. We ask you to be with our healthcare workers and to give them strength to work with all of those who are ill. Ask you to bless us and God us in all that we do, in your precious name we pray.
I do witness to the law and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, living in just this one.
All right, let's welcome all up here and thank you for coming out and participating in county government. Item number one, adoption of consent agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Scurry, second by Dr. Rucker. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Do we have any additions or deletions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Coon. All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, tonight we have the opportunity to recognize those employee service awards. We have four tonight and I'll say again, thank you for your service to Newberry County at this time. Christopher Cleveland, five years sheriff's office. Thank you all who do this especially in these difficult times. Just stay right here, we'll get the picture ready, all right? Justin Dufte Bledsoe, facilities manager, ten years.
Nine years.
Stephen Epps, ten years, sheriff's department.
Nine years.
Nancy Sanchez, fifteen years.
Nine years.
All right, you can have the camera front and center by yourself, but again, thank you. And again, we've got several law enforcement officers here tonight. Thank y'all again, seriously, for everything y'all do all the time, but especially in the difficult times that we've been seeing here in recent months. Thank y'all, thank y'all, and thank y'all. Really destroys my confidence in the world as a whole when I see stuff about defunding police when, what y'all have to go through, but again, thank y'all. Item number four, ordinance number 08-1820. An ordinance amending an ordinance entitled and ordinance authorizing the execution of an equipment lease purchase agreement in the amount not exceeding $965,000 relating to the purchase of certain equipment by Newberry County, authorizing the execution of other necessary documents and papers and other matters relating thereto to direct the use of available proceeds of the lease purchase agreement authorized thereby. Mr. Adams, you want to explain that before we call the first reading?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this ordinance amends a previous lease purchase ordinance, which was ordinance number 08-10-19, to allow for purchasing three heart monitors for use by rescue squads rather than two. The funding is available within the original borrowing amount.
All right, heard the explanation. We have a motion. This be the first reading. Motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Kane. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number five, ordinance number 08-1920. An ordinance authorizing the execution of an equipment lease purchase agreement in the amount not exceeding $878,500 relating to the purchase of certain equipment by Newberry County, authorizing the execution of other necessary documents, papers, and other matters relating thereto. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance provides for the lease purchase of the equipment items that council approved as part of the FY 2021 budget. That includes one ambulance remount at $174,000, one pumper tanker fire truck at $325,000, two heart monitors at $70,000, one motor grader $229,500, and two vehicles for school resource officers at $80,000, the total being $878,500.
All right, hearing the explanation, we have a motion to this be first reading. Motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Kane. Any additional discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number six, ordinance 08-2020, an ordinance to create JB Fulmer Special Tax District. This is where y'all might want to listen on this one. First reading. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, on July 14th, by a margin of 14 to 1, the voters residing on JB Fulmer Court approve the creation of a special tax district for the purpose of maintaining their unpaved roadway. The approved referendum called for a not to exceed $150 annual uniform service charge to offset expenses incurred by the county in providing this service. Under Code Section 4-9-30, Paragraph 5 in South Carolina Code of Laws, the creation of a special tax district requires the adoption of an ordinance by county council.
All right, council members, you've heard the explanation. Do we have a motion to this first reading? Mr. Scurry, second by Dr. Rucker. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number seven, an ordinance to declare surplus and approve the sale and transfer of a portion of certain real estate property owned by Newberry County. Mr. Adams?
Chairman, this ordinance contemplates the sale of approximately five acres of county property to the owners of Wilson Tractor, which is a business located on Wilson Road in Newberry. The property involved is situated directly across from Wilson Tractor and is a portion of Tax Map Parcel 399-39. The negotiated selling price is $20,000. Still to be resolved is how the small roadside park, which is part of this parcel, would be maintained into the future and kept apart from the company's business expansion. We also believe the park was built by the Civilian Conservation Corps, given its some historical significance. Staff would not schedule a second reading of this ordinance unless these issues are resolved prior to bringing that to you. There's also another consideration. The county is interested in optioning for purchase of the property that is owned by Wilson Brothers. We would like for those terms to be settled as well before council has second reading on this ordinance.
All right, you heard the explanation from the county administrator. Do we have a motion to speed at first reading? Motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Resolution 0720, a resolution honoring the centennial anniversary of the 19th Amendment ratification. Okay, self-explanatory, this is a community act. Mr. Adams?
Whereas the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution provides that, "The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sects." And whereas the U.S. Congress approved the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States on June 4th, 1919. And whereas Tennessee became the 36th and final state needed to ratify the 19th Amendment, thereby adding it to the Constitution on August 18th, 1920. And whereas Frances Sly became the first woman to register to vote in Newberry County on September 6th, 1920. And whereas the first women elected to countywide office in Newberry County were Mildred Reeves Harmon and Jeanette Coon Ham, who began their elected terms of office as Newberry County Clerk of Court and Newberry County Auditor respectively in 1967. And whereas 12 women have been elected to countywide office in Newberry County, including those who have served variously as auditor, clerk of court, coroner, probate judge, and treasurer. And whereas numerous women have served and continue to serve as elected representatives in our county and municipal governments, as well as on the school board in Newberry County. And whereas approximately 13,000 women in Newberry County are registered to vote, and women now comprise more than half of all registered voters in Newberry County. Now therefore be it resolved that women voters, since achieving suffrage 100 years ago, have made an increasingly profound impact on Newberry County through elective politics.
Thank you. Would you like to stand up and get your attire on there right quick?
We've got Rose Marie Favors and John Favors here representing the, I guess, the museum and the historical society?
Yes.
Okay, and they put on a very nice event yesterday celebrating the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment. It was well attended. I think you can still see it online at where?
The Newberry County Museum.
Newberry County Museum's site, so we urge you to take a look at that. It was very well presented and we thank you for doing that.
Thank you and thank you for being here tonight.
It was great. It was a lovely event.
All right, you've heard the resolution being read in. Guess we really don't need anything on that, do we?
They vote? There's no vote. You need a vote.
Oh, okay. All in favor of that? Do we have a motion?
I'm next.
Second? All in favor? Okay, all right. Sorry, I got kind of rattled by that one. That's pretty impressive. I was just worried Debbie didn't get included in there being one of the first women to read.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me tell you something. We now know why Frances Sly was the first woman registered voter in Newberry County, and that's because her horse was faster than Debbie Crumbers.
We love you, Debbie. Item number nine, Resolution 0820, a resolution declaring Newberry County support for the Americans with Disabilities Act. Mr. Adams?
Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act ensures the rights of citizens with disabilities by prohibiting discrimination in the areas of education, employment, government services, public accommodations, and other vital areas. And whereas July 26, 2020, was the 30th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act by President George H.W. Bush. And whereas the 30th anniversary of the ADA provides an opportunity to renew our commitment to the principles of the act by ensuring the rights and independence of citizens with disabilities and empowering our communities to benefit from the contributions of all Americans. And whereas the American with Disabilities Act reaffirmed the ideas that all people are entitled to participate fully in our economy and in our democracy, to contribute to community and country alike, and to achieve their full potential. Now therefore be it resolved that Newberry County honors the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act and renews its commitment to compliance with the act's letter and spirit.
Do we have a motion to adopt this resolution? Motion by Mr. Kane, second by Mr. Kane. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Item number 10, consideration to approve combined public communications for the inmate communication system at the detention center. Ms. Crystal Walter, purchasing director.
This solicitation dealt with the replacement of the communication system at the jail for the inmates, and it is no cost to the county. It is a replacement of one that is in existence. The company that we have now has been sold, they've been bought out, so they're not going to be dealing with that type of service any longer. We solicited proposals on June the 3rd and received five responses, and combined public communications was the highest ranked firm, and that is who staff does recommend. The evaluation committee consisted of Captain Ben Chapman from the sheriff's office, Lieutenant Dickert Lominek from the jail, and Captain Daniel Floyd from the jail, and myself. So having said that, the staff does recommend the highest ranked firm, combined public communications. We'll say that the county will retain 60% of the charges that are incurred, with 40% going to the vendor.
Any questions for Crystal? All right, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Reader. Any additional discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Crystal.
Sounds like a good team.
Executive session not needed. Appointments, anybody got any appointments tonight? Mr. Kane?
Chair, I'd like to appoint Mrs. Kinerds to the Upper Savannah Workforce Development Subcommittee. And I'll get that information.
And who was that, Mr. Kane? Who was that, I missed?
Uh, Kinerds, they were recommended by the...
Kinerds?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, heard the motion. Do we have a second? A second motion to read, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Any other appointments? All right, public comments. Tonight we have Mr. Thomas White, private road maintenance. If you would just come to the podium, state your name and address, and what your discussion is. Obviously, it's on road maintenance.
Good evening. My name is 304 Charlie Freeway in Palmary, South Carolina. I've been able to call it home for 11 years, and the road has gone in such poor maintenance from the owner that ambulances, fire trucks, they can't seem to get down into there safely or without damage to their vehicles. We would like to see if the county wouldn't mind taking over the road to provide maintenance to the folks down there.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to explain the process? The county wouldn't actually take ownership of the road, but the county could maintain the road under what's called a special tax district. That first requires that the voters who live on the road approve a referendum to create a special tax district. It'd be just the people who live on the road and whose property is affected. So... Yeah, we have to have a petition first.
I have that.
And you could probably get that from what I hear from the number of people in the room here, because how many people live on it? How many people live there?
Seven folks between renters and owners.
Yeah, well, and this is going to be people who live there and are registered voters?
Huh?
Oh, for the petition? Okay.
Yeah, it's got to be the owners.
Okay, well, when it comes to the referendum, it's just people who are registered voters who live there.
Okay.
And if the special tax district referendum is approved, there will be an amount on there. It'll say not to exceed a certain amount, just like JB Fulmer. So far, all of them we've done, I think we've done three?
Yeah, well, we've done two.
We've done two and we're about to do the third one. We've done $150 annually for all the parcels that are affected. So then council has to adopt an ordinance. They had first readied an ordinance to do this for JB Fulmer Court tonight, and it takes three readings of the ordinance. And does it require a public hearing? Yeah, and a public hearing. So, but usually that's a formality, especially if you get something like a 14 to 1 vote. So, we would have to have the public works director come down and look at it and make an appraisal of what the cost would be. Could we cover it for $150 per year from the number of households that you have there? Or the number of parcels? So that's the process. I will ask the public works director to go to this roadway and make such an appraisal.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you could leave your contact information at the desk.
Amy, can you bring that letter up here to the post office, give y'all? Are you a ritual?
Yeah, we could do that later. We can do that, yeah. We can keep this letter?
I can, well, I can take it.
County attorney is memorizing the letter.
It's extreme, it's very embarrassing.
I do have pictures tonight that family's in.
I wrote in there after I saw your Facebook post and also, I know...
Once we received that letter, several of us on the road took it upon ourselves to try to do some pretty minimal, you know, stuff to try to help clear some of the trees back, but it's mostly the cottles. They're very neat. Most of us have trucks that live on that road, but they're out there. You know, the cars are bottoming out. Some of the other neighbors have smaller cars. Yeah, our kids have to walk to the main road to get on the bus, especially when it's raining. There's a little battery, and I'm afraid that the amount of people that live on the road, that $150 for a household or residence is barely going to express the service that we need to be done. But, I mean, it's definitely a first step.
Yeah, okay, we'll take that first step.
Just so y'all know what this letter says, "This dear USPS, United States Postal Service, due to deteriorating road conditions, we will no longer be delivering packages to your house on Charlie Freeway. The damage and wear on our vehicles is simply unsustainable. You're welcome to install a box for parcels or pick them up from the Palmary Post Office. Thank you to Palmary Post Office." So that type of form for the road is gotten, so. Anyway, thank y'all, thank y'all for coming, appreciate it. Comments from the county administrator?
A couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Delinquent tax sale is normally held in November. We are going to push that out a little bit if we can to December, hoping that the coronavirus will abate by that time. If it doesn't, we're going to have to have the sale and make some sort of social distancing provisions. But staff is working on that, but we just want you to know it might not be the usual time in November. The other thing, Civic Leadership Academy. I put a handout in front of every council member's seat today. The city of Newberry is looking at starting what they call a civic leadership academy, with the focus being on empowering people to know what committees do what, how to serve on various committees and boards in the public sector, and even look at public employment opportunities for the youth. And the city is looking at a charge of $20,000 to them to do this. They've asked if the county would like to partner on that. Obviously, it's not an agenda item for tonight, so it can't be voted on, but I might be taking your temperature on that in the next few days as to whether we put it on a future agenda.
Now, how is that going to be different from the other leadership in Newberry?
Yes. Yeah, my impression was that it was going to focus a lot on service on boards and commissions. So I think Andrew has done leadership in Newberry, I have not, but I think maybe leadership in Newberry is more wide-ranging in its purpose.
Leadership covers pretty much every aspect of the county. That would have been focused under our government or municipalities, so that...
Can you step to the mic? No, I'm just kidding.
Thanks, Andrew. Anything else?
No.
All right, comments from council members. Mr. Scurry?
Nothing, good time.
All right, Dr. Rucker, one of our female elected females, and also who did a great job at the event yesterday, so.
Thank you, thank you. And just be in prayer for our children and our teachers and so forth as they return to school.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, I want to remind y'all, it's going to be a great day on August 23rd when I have my next birthday, which is this weekend coming up. So if y'all like to put a star up in the sky or anything, that'd be fine.
And it'll be the number, the number, what number?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
All right, Mr. Kane?
None, sir.
None? Mr. Stottman texted me and said he was not coming, that he was struggling with a good bit of coughing, and due to the environment we're living in, basically, I think he was just, said it'd be best he didn't come tonight, so. All right, Mr. Kane?
I'd like to recognize Jesse H. Oats III, better known as Tookie Oats. Tookie passed away Saturday. I'd like for you to have his family in your prayers. Tookie served as a highway patrolman here in Newberry County for 24 years. He was on highway patrol. He was a sled agent for 10 years. He also served South Carolina National Guard. And Tookie at one time was also Newberry County Administrator or Director of our county detention center. If you would keep him and his family in your prayers, thank you.
I also want to remind that Mr. David Green passed away. He worked with Newberry School District as the adult ed principal. He was there for years, and he passed away.
All right, I really don't have any comments other than just to say both of those people are extremely great people, and Tookie Oats is definitely a legend beyond legends, so. Future meetings, we have our next county council meeting on September the 2nd. Personnel and a governmental committee is on September 14th, and then the following county council meeting is on September 16th. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Adjourned, thank you for being here.